We'll call to order officially the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present this evening. We will begin with an opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Jake Fittisimano for that program.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we have a treat. We've got our Girl Scout Troop West Valley City 312 with us tonight, who will lead us in a flag ceremony and the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Girl Scout Troop West Valley City 312.
Audience, please rise. Color guard advance.
Guess I should kneel. Fifteen yard penalty.
Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, honor your flag. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, just please.
You may all be seated. Okay, then we have our minutes of May 15th. A motion from the Council on the minutes.
May I move for approval of our May 15 minutes?
Second. Any discussions? If none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passage unanimously, the minutes are approved. Okay, next, now we're to the part of the program where most of you are here for. What we will do is the Council is going to go down and stand here, and we will invite each of the students being honored tonight to come forward here to this microphone and to introduce themselves and their school that they're representing. And then, once everyone has had a chance to introduce themselves, and we're going to shake hands just to get to meet everyone, we will then take a few minutes for some pictures. And so all of you will have an opportunity. We'll do a group picture. You want to do individual ones, certainly we'll do that. And then, after we've taken the pictures, the students will pick up their Star of Excellence Award. It's out in the hall. It's organized by high school. So you'll be able to get that there. In the past, we used to try and introduce everyone, but not everyone came. A lot of things going on in the schools and so on. With that then, we'll invite the Council then to step down here and ask the students, just if you'll line up on this side in whatever order you want, just introduce yourselves and your school as soon as we're there.
If we could have the students start up on this side and then come through and wait over here with people.
And for those who would like to take a picture individually of their student up here, this center way here, just feel free to come up and take pictures.
My name is Noah Sorensen. I'm a student at Granger High School.
My name is Michael Edgerton, and I'm a student at Granger High School.
I'm Miranda Obik, and I'm a student at Hunter High.
My name is Woby Too, and I'm a student at Granger High.
My name is Madison Yuck, and I go to Granger High.
My name is Lori Alphazree, and I was here at Hunter High.
My name is Laura Hamlet, and I'm a student at Hunter High.
My name is Diana Chan, and I'm a student at Hunter High.
My name is Zoe Oldchewski. I'm a student at Hunter High.
Hi, I'm Mary Newton. I'm a student at Granger High School.
My name is Zach Christensen, and I'm a student at Granger High.
My name is Yelena Dragicharich, and I'm a student at Granger High School.
My name is Simon Hanuski, and I go to Granger High.
My name is Cameron Bona. I go to Granger High School.
My name is Zach Zito. I go to Cypress High School.
I'm Mariana Mendez. I'm a student at Cypress High School.
I'm Amy Michler, and I'm a student at Cypress High School.
I'm Melanie Christian, and I'm a student at Cypress High School.
I'm Derek Chetett. I'm a student at Cypress High School.
I'm Sarah Davis, and I'm a student at Cypress High School.
I'm Rachel Lee, and I'm a student at Hunter High School.
I'm Lynn Murray, and I'm a student at Hunter High School.
I'm Elise House, and I'm a student at Hunter High School.
I'm Jordan Davis. I go to Hunter High School.
I'm Tan Lee. I'm from Tewksbury High School.
Hi, I'm Wendy Nichols. I go to Tewksbury High School.
I'm Jessica Naya. I go to Cypress High School.
I'm Matthew Horan. I attend Hunter High School.
I'm Sandra Loria, and I'm from Tewksbury.
My name is Graham Walther. I go to Hunter High School.
I'm Richard Nguyen. And I go to Hunter High School.
I'm William Crowe. And I go to Hunter High School.
I'm Anna Cooper Seale. And I go to Hunter High School.
I'm Angela Slay. Can I go to Granger High School?
They all passed the test because the wires were sticking out back here because it's turned around. No one fell down. Great. What we would like to do now is do a group picture. And Will and Sam, will you arrange them here? And should we go stand back up behind them? Okay, let's have the old conference. We're going to try to put everyone in this little circle. You have to know your number. For pictures, if you cannot see us in the audience, we can't see you. So make sure you find a place for you to get some pictures. Did we get everybody good? Thank you. Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to take pictures?
Yes.
Okay, to that, thank you very much. We have another picture to take. She can't see her granddaughter. Who are you are? What do you got to mention? Your work. The girls' scout department, please.
Because it tends to go around, walk away around. I think it's...
Oh, yes, that is.
I mean, we can't go around that way.
Do you want front?
Oh, does walking around, she can't walk around?
No, not, not. So you can't walk around. Jump over to the other side. Some ground fences are pretty tall. Sure, we're going to have the girls' scouts go first because probably they have to be... Okay, girls, let's go ahead. Let's go, girls, guys. Anybody else have a line?
Hey, Derek. You want to take a Cypress picture? Well, then just wait here for a second. Are you guys going to do like all of you up there? Right here.
Okay, let's do this. If you're taking a picture or you're on, you have a certificate, come this way so we can do it faster. And the camera person stay in the middle. Everybody take a step that way so you'll be in the middle of the camera. Let's take a good picture. Anybody need individual pictures right here? Yeah, some tasks I'd like to have. I thought I was back at picture day in elementary school. Get into everyone, I think. Is that what? Of course you don't. There's a small there. Okay. Looks like we're set. Ready to go. Next is our public comment period. Is there anyone here on my list who hasn't spoken before? Just, I won't go through all... Yeah, not question, answer, five minutes max. So, okay. And if not, acknowledge your mind. With that then, let's go down the list. Oh, that's right. Now, we do have a public hearing scheduled later here. That's application Z6 2018, Canyon Cove Homes, on that discussion. If your name is on this list, we'll ask you to wait because we'll have a separate public hearing for that issue alone. But on that one, it has to pertain to that issue. This earlier one is for everything else. Anything. Okay. Darren Paddock? Is that close?
Hey, Mayor. Hey, me and Ken, we've been here, I think about two years ago. We talked about speed bumps, speed bumps in the neighborhood. Then nothing, nothing's gotten done. And the past, they've done their survey or whatever they've done, and that didn't work. People are still going forty, fifty, sixty miles an hour down that damn neighborhood. Nothing get done. What I'm trying to understand is, I know West Valley's got their toll report under compliance. I just put $600 to get my park dip up to compliance, but the city can't, the city can't help us out with speed bumps on the neighborhood. But then again, I can, like I said, get my park dip $600, $700, but I'm getting all the landcapes done. And having expected that I'll be damned if we can get speed bumps and speed bumps. And I sit, I sit out that yard and I yell at people every day, every single day, and yet nobody stops. The survey don't work. I just, you know, we just like to know what, what can be done. We have to pay for ourselves.
I apologize. I should have went through the rules ahead of time. It's not a question, answer period. It's time for individuals to present their information. If you want to talk with staff afterwards, you can.
This is the same scenario as two years ago. I mean, the same scenario. And then somebody's going to say that they'll go on a survey and whatever, and that don't work. Ken lives, what, a block from me? And this is the same problem.
It's, it's your, you're signed up to speak. Are you through? Okay.
I'm through.
And did you sign up to speak?
I signed up, but I didn't fill it all the way out, sir.
Oh, that's fine. If you'll state your name.
My name's Ken Christopher. We meet with one of you gentlemen or ladies tomorrow, and then we can talk back and forth. Is that right? Do you know how you feel? That's what someone told me.
If you hang around just a few minutes, okay, till we get everyone's comment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, some of these names I do recognize. So Matt McPherson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman and Councilman as well. I have just a few moments I just wanted to briefly discuss. Obviously, we're talking about the Highbury neighborhood. We, I've been trying to show our solidarity and support for being here to let you know that we're very, very much invested in this neighborhood. And this really all I wanted to bring up today was is just to remind everyone on the City Council and the Mayor, I'm sure you guys are aware that where our single-family homes that are surrounded by mostly rental townhomes and a large apartment complex, our community, we invest a lot into our community, into our neighborhood, into our, into our homes, into our communities. We put much more in than we take out. And I don't think the same thing could be said with a straight face about renters or apartment dwellers. It's just not, it's not the same situation for them. And we understand that. And all we're asking for is that that consideration be kept in mind with the upcoming vote, as well as with proposals we've made to assisting us with reclaiming some of our streets and roads from the encroachment of the pinnacle apartments, in particular with their parking, with problems that have spilled over from there. We need help from the city to accomplish that. And that's why we're here today is to ask for, not only for your support in ensuring that the land stay the zone for a single family to help us combat that, but also that you keep in mind the investment that we put in, not only have put into our homes and the purchase price, but also that we continually put into this community. We're very much involved. We very much love this community. We love the neighborhood. We love the city. We want it to be successful. We want our neighborhood to stay successful. And so we're just asking for your help in making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Blanchard?
My name is Darren Blanchard. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I've been here before, and I just want to reiterate some of those things that I've said and stand with Matt and reassert our feelings as a community of Highbury. And I just plead with you to, please, think about what we're trying to do with the city in general, what we want the outcome to be for this vote, and that we would like to have single-family homes to expand our neighborhood. As Matt said, we are surrounded by rental units, and the traffic issue is a problem. The parking issue is a problem. There's, there are a lot of issues that are brought up by the rental units, and we would like to have the City Council consider the plan moving forward into have single-family homes go into that land that's going to be voted on. I worked up at the University of Utah Hospital, and I wagered that's one of the worst parking disasters ever. There's nowhere to park there. And we just want to think ahead and plan for our city and to have our, have our neighborhood grow and expand in the right direction that we think is, is the right way. And that would be the single-family homes. And I appreciate my help. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Markham.
Hey, Mike Markham, three zero zero eight Alasur. I need to encourage all of you guys, I've been recruited and I'm part of the West Valley, I can't, citizens, police classes or whatever, I'm taking every, every Wednesday night. I would encourage you, every one of you, to step up, take these classes. It will give you a whole new perspective on what the police department goes through in, uh, trying to enforce the laws and take care of this community. It's, uh, not quite as easy as we all think when we're sitting back and we're talking about, uh, doing this and doing that, you know? In some of the cases, they go in very handicapped in what they can do and what they can't do. I've missed one class, but, uh, I've tried to go out of my way to make sure I get in town for every one of them. And I got another one tomorrow night, and they're gonna continue on. I know it's gonna be another weeknight out of your family lives, but I think as a body that, that dictates somewhat over the police department, if you've got some firsthand knowledge of what's going on, um, it might help. It's like I suggested, I think you all need to get out and, uh, cruise your districts on a regular basis to see what's going on out there. Makes it a little harder for Laughters and Dawn because they have the whole city, but, uh, I think it's important to get out and look at the neighborhoods and the people that you represent and see what the police are up against. Um, I've kinda given up on parking issues and rental units and, uh, dormitories and single-family neighborhoods, I, I see that doesn't seem to work. But, uh, this is something I think would do you all a lot of good. I'm, I'm signing up for a ride-along that you haven't done yet. I don't know how many of you guys have done a ride-along, but, uh, to start one of these classes last week, it was, uh, some scenarios that we had to work through where, you know, I had a taser and a can of mace and a mop block. You get a whole new perspective of what they go through when somebody's shooting at you and you need to decide how you can act appropriately. So, I would highly recommend it. If you don't wanna do some of the things, if you don't want the dogs grabbing you and jerking you around, you don't have to do that, but, uh, I would highly recommend it if you'd get out there before you pass judgment on the police department sometimes. Another quick issue being, I got two minutes left. And I've already talked to Russ about this. Granger Hunter Improvement District is putting a water line in down through the middle of, down forty-one hundred between twenty-seven and thirty-two hundred west. There's some empty property, the old Mackey Farm, that is about thirty at west, right in the middle of that. I called Granger Hunter because I'm kind of a plan ahead sorta guy of what might happen, because I run the water company up in Canis. I asked them to think about putting a tee in the line, where with, they could tee into the water line to do that, uh, so it's already done, and they don't have to tear up the new road that we're gonna put in. And their basic comment was to me that, because it's like fifty-six hundred dollars to put that tee in and do everything, and GPS is which, they're already got the hold there, I don't know where that comes from, they could always collect their money that they're so worried about when the developer, whatever happens to that property, gets ready to go. But their philosophy is they'd rather tear up the new road, or have the developer tear up the new road to, to, to put the water line in rather than do it now when everything's tore up. To me, for them, that's really short-sightedness. Um, I just finished a fifteen-hundred-foot piece of, of water line up at my place, and we put tees in every place we thought somebody might wanna connect. And it's a closed system right now. I won't let anybody else on, but I'm gonna resign in September, so whatever the new people wanna do, it's gonna be up to them. But in planning ahead, I've put a tee in and plugged it every place we could have another connection. And, and, and so next time your buddy, uh, Corey Rushton stands in front of you and wants a deal on water and so forth, tell him no, tell him to get a job, a real job, not for the government or anybody like that, and, uh, think about how he spends money. Thanks.
Thank you. Felicia Anderson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, this is actually my first council meeting, but, um, you know, brought myself and my voice here because I feel really strongly about being able to voice my concern for the, the vote that will be coming up soon on the rezoning of, um, the property in Highbury to, rather than single-family homes, to multi-unit dwellings. Um, you know, I've lived in Highbury roughly about four years now, and, you know, part of what attracted my husband and I to that neighborhood was, was the school. Um, you know, with two young boys, that was something that attracted us to that. And also just that community in particular, um, felt like it was kind of like a gem, you know, with the, the communal pride and the effort that's been put into what I would call gentrification of that area, um, you know, increasing the level of, of income and housing. And there was a pretty distinctive difference once the pinnacle apartments have gone in. I understand there has to be diversification, but I mean, our streets are overcrowded, um, it's, at any given time, you can drive along that road at night, and it's eighty cars deep along the, the side of the road and into our neighborhood despite signs, despite, despite people's efforts. And it's just rather concerning and it's somewhat sad because it's, it's overcrowding our neighborhood. Um, you know, we've seen some, not so much, we take pride in our, in our community areas, our grass areas, the waterways, and we've seen some disruption to that, and to put in more multi-unit housing will only add to the overcrowding problem, add to the overcrowding of, of Neil Armstrong, which many of our children are attending or will attend. And, you know, I look at what West Valley City represents, like unity, pride, and progress, and I think that there's been a lot of progress made. And I think that there is pride, and we do take pride, and I think it would be a digression in that neighborhood, it highly concerns me. There were things that attracted me to that neighborhood and my husband that I actually would highly reconsider where we're living, simply because I would be really disappointed to see us digress. There was a plan for a reason, it was zoned as single-family housing, and typically when there's a good plan, you stick to the plan and the plan works. And I would hope that there would be a more long-term strategy taken into consideration when, when that vote takes place. So, thank you.
Thank you. John Cross.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. Uh, John Cross, twenty-five forty-five south, thirty-five sixty west. Kind of in the same position that Boar, or that, uh, the Highbury Pinnacle people were. We bought our house in seventy-nine, and it was so residential, we brought this up last week and all that. When we moved Boar in, and they're just hell during the week. But this weekend was fantastic. It was so, if you had anything to do with that, Nicole, thank you. They were just quiet, it was fantastic. So that's all I have to say about that. You rezoned it for manufacturing, now manufacturing, so it's noisy. Code enforcement, whoever did a good job with that. See, the neighborhood is just busier than the Dickens', and we still got a week left. So that means everybody, I think, is probably gonna do what you asked them. And then the last thing I have is with the Highbury Pinnacle people, we've seen them now for four weeks, they are united. Whatever the hell it is they want, give it to them. So that's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Ralph Burner.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for letting me come and speak before you. You know, I've lived in West Valley City for twenty-one years now, and I've never been to a city council meeting other than a few weeks ago and then tonight. You do have a hard job, and I appreciate the hard job that all of you are doing. Mr. Mayor, I know that you took, take pride in your neighborhood, you and I were neighbors, I saw you walking through the neighborhood, I enjoyed speaking to you before you were the mayor, um, I helped you putting signs in my yard, and, uh, I enjoyed speaking to you, and I still do. Ms. Lang, I met you at Westfest, I enjoyed speaking to you, and you seem like you really have a lot for our district, you are our district, correct? I appreciate your work. You know, in the twenty-one years, I've seen West Valley grow, and I've seen our police department become better and better. So let's talk a little bit about police department and how it'll affect with this rezoning if you do decide to rezone it in, the Highbury, into, uh, more cars on the street. I know it's a broken record, you've heard it over and over, cars on the street. You know, I don't have any children that live at home, my children are all grown, so what's my fight? I live on the south part of Highbury. This really doesn't affect me because I don't see the parking, so where's my fight? My fight is, is that I've got to know my neighbors through this discussion. I go out and do, um, my neighborhood watches during the day, and occasionally I'll see Matt walking around, and we don't just wave, we know each other by name. I see some of my other neighbors here today, and we're all united, if nothing else, you have united us. So let's talk about how the, uh, police department will be affected by this parking, you know? You talk about parking, and on a Saturday and Sunday, who cares? It's not affecting the school, right? So let's talk about something. Snow and ice control policies and procedures, West Valley City Public Works. Let's talk about section code twenty-four dash four dash one eleven. Okay, on-street parking. It is dangerous and difficult to plow streets clogged with parked vehicles. Some streets, especially cul-de-sacs, may not be plowed, and plows cannot safely drive down them. The most helpful thing residents can do to facilitate snow removal is to get their cars off the street, and encourage others to do the same. To facilitate snow removal, city ordinance prohibits on-street parking whenever there is snow or ice on the road. Any vehicle parked on a West Valley street after an accumulation of ice or snow, or of one inch or more, will be subject to ticketing and towing. Do you really need West Valley Police Department being called by us, because we will, on Saturdays and Sundays, to come out and tow and ticket all these cars? Where are all these extra cars gonna park when it snows? I don't know, I don't think we need to be bothered with West Valley Police Department ticketing, so please, we ask you to consider, do not change the zoning, leave it as the way it is. I offer this to the recapping reporter, City Recorder. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was there anyone else for a public comment?
Mayor? Um, I'm Nicole McCray, thank you, Council. Um, as I've stated before, I live in Highbury Place, um, Ivory Homes Community. Um, tomorrow at the Planning Commission meeting, Garbage Homes will try and impress you all with their jargons such as energy efficiency and tankless water heaters and a high asking price, all the things that single-family homes can also have as well. Um, they will probably tell you that they heard our public concerns during their meeting, and that they've planned extra parking. Unfortunately, it's not going to be enough. There will be problems with parking, and the traffic problems will be significant. I was told by a Garbage representative during their public comment meeting, that only business professionals who bike or walk will be purchasing these proposed units. I teach at Armstrong. Um, unfortunately, because Neil Armstrong is so highly sought out by families, that will be a completely false statement. Multiple families will squeeze into these single units just to attend, which will double the estimated amount of vehicles and people. We are already suffering from a past rezoning, as you all know, the Highbury Pinnacle apartments. Um, they, it increased our crime, our traffic, and our parking problems, as we've talked to you over these last several weeks. As, I have owned my home in Highbury for ten years. I plan on staying here forever. That was my forever home, it wasn't my starter home, that was my forever home. We put everything, our starter home was in a condo down, in downtown Salt Lake. We got out of there, we didn't wanna be there, we loved Highbury, and that's where we wanna be. We've been here for ten years already, and I want to live here, die here, I care about Highbury. Um, we want you to consider the disproportionate amount of townhouses and apartments that currently are already here compared to the single, um, family homes, and we really want a vote for no tomorrow for the rezoning of Highbury. Please help us maintain the gem that we all love and care about, and help it, help us preserve it, and build it, and make it amazing, because it already is, but let's continue to move on that plan that was already set up. Again, thank you so much for listening to us, and we hope tomorrow that the vote will be no for the rezoning of Highbury. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that then, we'll close the public comment portion. Uh, Mr. Isaac?
Uh, thank you, sir. No, I don't have any comments this evening.
Okay. To the Council?
Just like to, uh, echo Mike's encouragement to attend Citizens Academy. Uh, I did attend one here in West Valley many, many years ago, before I retired and before I got into the, uh, area. But, uh, it is, uh, an outstanding, an outstanding academy, uh, an outstanding opportunity to learn just what does happen on many of these police calls that we only see the report of either on the news or in the newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, some information for those of you are typical, uh, public comment periods, so that you're aware. The City Council cannot discuss policy unless it's on their agenda, and so we have to be careful with that. But, what we've come up with is a solution that, what I'm going to do now. There were several items brought up, for example, on speed bumps, we wanna put that on our study agenda for two weeks from tonight, we're not meeting next week. We'll have a meeting to discuss that, get some feedback from staff and so forth. Remember, government doesn't move fast. Okay? Uh, second, yes, the Granger Hunter Improvement District issue with that water line, uh, let's put that on our agenda too. And we, uh, maybe ask staff to do a little bit of research on that, because, yeah, that's a real concern, that's real concern. And, and of course, the other issue is, certainly, if I can just call it Highbury, okay, there's a whole bunch of things under that, but Highbury in general, uh, we'd like to get an update maybe from, uh, the Planning Commission and what happened there, and more than just that, that what the vote was, but rather what the issues were and how those were handled, so we get a better update, because that's one I think we're all very interested in, and that will help us immensely. Now, normally, we don't do that, but in this case, we would really like to have a, a more in-depth report and summary of the issues and how the, uh, Commission responded to those, uh, so that we have a little better understanding of it. Uh, so those are the items we'll put on there, uh, for our, uh, study meeting in two weeks, okay? And that way, we can legally do it. By the way, so you know, it's against the law for us to debate policy in a public meeting if it's not on the agenda, and that's for the public's protection, so we don't sneak anything by you. Although, most people don't come to our council meetings anyway, so it's almost like we're, um, doing that, but, but, so we do appreciate those who've come to share their comments. Understand that participation in government is important, that you do, and yes, we are listening, uh, we try and take that into account, can't predict where things will end up, uh, but certainly, I very much personally appreciate it, and I know, uh, in talking with other council members, they do as well. So, thank you for being part of the process and making a difference in what happens in our city. And, uh, if the gentleman with speed bumps, they can actually maybe talk with our Public Works Department, maybe just for a few minutes here shortly, if someone would do that, and then we can get, be a little better prepared for next, or in two weeks for our study meeting. The others, I think, are ones that we, uh, will take into internally. Okay? All right. With that then, uh, now we go to, uh, the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, application Z dash six twenty eighteen, and in conjunction with that, ordinance eighteen dash eighteen, uh, a change of zone, and resolution eighteen dash seventy, a development agreement. This is for Cove Canyon Homes, uh, for property at thirty-two forty-eight south, sixty- for property at 3248 South 6400 West. It will, the proposed change is to change the zoning on the property from agricultural to R18. A single-unit dwelling residential, minimum lot size 8,000 square feet. Then as well, they have a development agreement on this 1.44 acres of property. And as I recall, this property was long and kind of narrow. They are requesting, now normally they meet every requirement except one. And that requirement is that the frontage for that, they cannot meet because of the shape of the property. So they're requesting an exception to our rules by putting those homes down a street along the side of the property and building. I think it was, I guess there's a home there now, but that'll be torn down and there will be four homes, if I'm remembering correctly. So that's the issue before us. If we move forward in this, we would grant them that exception. Or if we say no, they'll have to go back and figure out something different. With that as an introduction to the issue, we will now turn to the public and open a public hearing for public input on this issue. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Yes, sir. If you'll come forward and please introduce yourself if and how you're representing in this process. If you're a homeowner or neighbor or for a developer or whatever.
Thank you. I'm actually, thank you to Councilman and the Mayor. I am actually one of the co-owners of Canyon Cove Homes. We started working with the property owner of this land. Originally when we met with him.
You need a name.
I'm sorry, Kurt Dial. Kurt Dial, give him the address. 9905 South Burnham Woods Way. Thank you. We, when we originally started working with him, he had, he had bought this property years ago and he'd came in and talked to the city. And at that time, they told him he could probably develop that into six lots in the future. So when we started looking at it, thought this should work great. As we went through the process, we realized that in order to make it work, we've actually been narrowed down to four lots, which is going to be tight financially to make it work, but we think we still do so. With that, we, we have the situation where they are long, narrow lots. Three of them are long, narrow lots. I don't know if you've seen the plot plan to it. Actually where there's the turn-in lane, we'll be able to do entrance garages on those. And so with that, we should be able to easily make the front yards and rear yards setbacks work to where it doesn't, not an issue. The one at the far back's not an issue. The one out by the road where we're carrying down the ice or old home will, could be an issue. And we appreciate if we could get leniency on a five-foot to be able to either set it back five feet farther, the 15-foot setback in the back or the 20-foot setback in the front so we can make it not such a long bowling alley. It would be a more presentable home to be able to be used. We're willing to do, meet the minimum city standards. This is the only exception we're asking for. If we can, if we can make this work, we think we can make the neighborhood better. They're large homes with a lot of smaller homes and smaller lots around it, but we're willing to do that to help meet your future plans. That's pretty much all I have.
Just a question then to clarify, it wasn't the frontage, it was the setback? It was the exception?
Yeah, everything that, yeah, the setback was the exception. Right now the lots are just so narrow. Five more feet would allow us to fit a lot of our standard footprint homes on them and make a lot nicer looking home so it's not so long and narrow.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this issue? Seeing none. We'll close the public input portion. We'll bring it back to the council and to the council.
Mayor, as I stated last week, I'm not in favor of rezoning this agricultural property just so that we can have four houses squeezed into this large lot. I don't think voting against it.
I don't know that the configuration is my concern as much as intensity, but I actually like the idea maybe of a private lane sort of thing. But can, can I get clarification on what the zoning is in those adjacent areas around it? Are those also R18 or are those estate?
All of the areas around it are R18 currently.
Thank you.
So uncomfortable with this being an R18 because they're having the flag lot configuration. The minimum lot size is 12,000 square foot, which allows for a nicely sized home. So at this time, I'd like to move for approval of Ordinance 18-18.
Any further discussion? Okay. Then to our city recorder then for the taking of the roll call vote.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Nay.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norphell?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Passes?
Motion passes unanimously or by majority. Sorry.
Okay. Now, what was your motion on?
18-18.
18-18, okay.
I'd like to finish up. I will move for approval of Resolution 18-70.
Second. Property before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none to the city assistant city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norphell?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Resolution 18-71. This is authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Loomquist Hale for mental health insurance coverage for our fiscal year 2018, 2019. And this is our standard contract. This is a renewal or continuation, if you will, of the current services that we are providing. Now on the documentation, it shows $225,000. But if I remember correctly, Mr. Pile, Mr. Pile, Mr. Isaac, that is for the total of it, not the, that's the total for that benefit for employees, right? Not just the increase amount.
That's correct.
So if you think 225,000, no, that's, that will be our new budget amount for that total benefit.
That's correct.
And they did say here that there was an increase of 20% or about $38,000 on this one. Okay. So that is the issue before us. Do we go ahead and authorize the city to continue that agreement with those costs? To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 18-71.
Second. Property force, any further discussion? Seeing none to our city assistant city recorder.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norphell?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next we have our Resolution 18-72, which is authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with EMI Health for dental insurance coverage for city employees for the coming fiscal year. The total impact on that is a budget of $495,000. The premiums actually have not increased, so that's basically the same number. So that is the issue before us. Should we continue that contract at this in our budget? To the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-72.
Second. Property force, any further discussion? Seeing none to our city assistant city recorder.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norphell?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Next we go to Resolution 18-73. Similar type thing, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with select health for health insurance coverage. This is for city employees. This one is larger, as you can imagine, $7,270,000. They've been providing the benefits for the last, this benefit for the last 12 years. And let's see. The negotiated increase was 5.4%, but they said that was approximately $353,000, well below the market rate. So I assume that that means that that was the amount of additional funding.
The trend in that particular benefit is around 7.5% to 8%. So what that means is that the 5.4% was a, was a well below trend. In other words, that's 5.4 represents $353,000.
Yeah. So that's the increase in the overall cost in the budget. So, okay. And we're fortunate, we have a good, healthy workforce, so that seems to help. With that introduction then to a resolution, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-73.
It's property before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none to our assistant city recorder.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norphell?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next we have Resolution 18-74. This is to authorize the city to enter an agreement with Standard Insurance Company for long-term disability insurance. This one is a little different, although we have facilitated with this company for employees to buy it. This is actually, by definition, a new employee benefit where the city will be paying the costs. And this one comes up to $177,000. So in our budget, this is a new item, additional funding, and that is the total cost of the contract. There was a reason for doing that. It looked like based upon the previous options, if more employees didn't take it, then the cost would go up significantly and probably wouldn't be able to offer it. This is a situation where the city is proposing to increase benefits for our employees. That is the introduction to it, to the council.
Yes, a comment, Mayor. Also, besides providing an additional benefit for our employees, which is important, it benefits and protects the city in allowing employees who are disabled to know that they have this benefit and go ahead and avail themselves of it rather than having us to provide light duty or make other accommodations for them if they really can't do their job. They had not the foresight to purchase this insurance on their home. And with that, for those reasons, I move for approval of Resolution 18-74.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none to our assistant city recorder for the roll call.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norphell?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Let's see. We are now on our consent agenda, Resolution 18-75. And this is a public sidewalk lighting and utility easement for an ARA-C, a limited liability corporation, for property at 2449 South 6755 West. And I'm just quickly reminding myself of this one. Oh, Freeport West. Public sidewalks required for the South Frontage Road. So this is in conjunction with the development taking place there. And there's a stretch of sidewalk and that that needs to be done. And of course, the construction easement that we will do, that's a part of the requirement as they put in more buildings along there. And this is a gradual process of doing that as they build them. With that then, to the council.
I move for approval of our consent agenda.
Second. It's property before us, all seeing no further discussion. I'll go to the assistant city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norphell?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next on our agenda is Resolution 18-69, which is an update of the city manager's appointment with an employment agreement or contract. And the details of that contract are there. There have been various proposals to modify that that we will be discussing, which ones we decide to accept or not. And so at this point, I think what we want to do before we get into discussing the specifics of the contract, which we will do in our regular meeting, we're going to go to an executive or closed meeting for the purpose of discussing professional competency before we decide on the contract. So with that, if there's a council member that is interested in making that motion, we'll go to a closed meeting. We will not handle any other business other than the contract when we come back and meet.
Mayor, I have some comments on the motion. I'm opposed to it. We've had several closed sessions regarding the professional competency of our city manager. We've discussed this at length. This particular issue, the contract's been on our agenda two weeks in a row. It's no secret, it's of general interest. I think we ought to discuss this matter without further closed sessions. I think we've all made up our minds as to where we sit on, on this matter. The purpose of a closed session is to protect an employee or someone we may discuss, protect their interests so that they are not discussed in public. However, when the issue is centered solely on whether or not an agreement for continued employment should be extended, there's no interest to protect. It's not to protect our interests or our discussions from being made public. And for that reason, I'm going to vote against this motion.
Okay. Any further comments or we have a motion but not a second?
Is there anyone that disagrees with Councilmember Bueller? In that regard, are there still issues that need to be discussed in private or in a closed session?
I personally think we need to discuss it on, in public right now. We can openly discuss it right now.
It is, I think, quite likely that issues that would normally not be talked about by, about employees will then be discussed in this meeting. And if that's what the council wants, I'm okay with doing that. Typically, the reason you do that is to protect the employee. And Wayne Pile is our employee. So, but whatever the will of the council is.
Then I'll second Councilmember Lang's motion.
Okay, now is this one we would need to, well, no, typically we don't take a motion or a roll call vote on a closed session.
To go into a closed session, I can refer this to our attorneys, but to go into a closed session, you do need to take a vote and it's voted on by the supermajority of the council. So you would need two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Which is five.
Which is five and five.
Okay. So why have we not been doing that in the past at our other meetings? Why were we advised specifically by our legal counsel that we did not need to do that? What changed?
I'm not sure.
Did we ask our counsel to comment on that?
Yeah, let's do that.
Would you like me to come up, Mr. Mayor, to the...
Yes. Because I just want to make sure why...
I'm not sure that we've been having roll call votes to closed sessions before.
Yeah.
We haven't been having roll call votes. The votes usually occur in the study session over there, and we don't do roll call votes in that. No one has ever opposed... The rule's been here for quite some time, the two-thirds rule, but no one's ever opposed a vote against going into an executive session.
Okay, then I'm going to make a statement. Typically, when we ask how we are to follow the law, it's not because we can get away with it. It's because we do what we're supposed to do. And so, I'm sorry, but that one I put at your doorstep. I think we were ill-advised previously. Because if it's supposed to be voted on, it's a regular council meeting. We can call it study. We can call it a trip to a firehouse. But when we take motions, we're to follow the law. So, sorry, that gets my ire up because we want to do it right. We expect you to advise us right.
Absolutely.
So, and I'm fine with this, and I will abide by it. I don't have any problem with that. What upsets me is that we were not properly advised previously. Whatever... Does it matter what name we call our council meeting? Is it a council meeting? And do we have to abide by the same laws for open meetings, for motions, for everything else?
Under the open meetings, Bob, you're absolutely right. They're all open meetings unless there's a motion to put it into a closed meeting. That's right. So it doesn't matter what it's called, study meeting, not study meeting.
Yeah. So in our study meeting, we have to follow the same rule.
But in terms of what the law says as far as the vote to go into the study, it simply indicates that there is a two-thirds majority required to go into the closed meeting.
Well, and you can determine that from a voice vote as well, rather than a roll call vote.
Right. We've never had anyone object to that vote over the years. But the mayor's absolutely right. It's probably safer just to take the poll to make sure.
Probably safer. Could you give a little more clarification than probably safer?
Sure, sure.
Do we need to do it or not?
I think this... I think I would advise the council, if there is an issue in a matter like this, where it sounds like some people are opposed to the vote, to take the vote in a roll call way.
Okay.
In order to get that on the...
Well, unless the council tells me differently, I assume that this will happen from now on, regardless of the meeting we're in, regardless of the purpose for which we do it. Because if it's good here, it's good everywhere.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Not upset with the council. I'm just... I wasn't happy that I didn't have the correct information.
We did the same thing last week, and it wasn't...
Yeah.
The supermajorities.
Well, the question is here now. I'm being told it's a roll call vote. I can certainly voice vote, figure out if it's not unanimous, and say, oh, how many were there? By raise of hands, and we take care of that. But we're saying now it has to be a roll call vote, so it will be a roll call vote from now on. Okay. Thank you. With that then, there is a motion before us. Any further discussion?
Maybe I'm being facetious, but can we blend it? Can we amend the motion to say, let's just get it all out, so we don't need another closed session on this? Because I do agree with Councilmember Bueller on that regard as well. Maybe that's facetious. Maybe it's real.
I'm sorry, you wanted to amend the motion, you said?
Right. Can we... Can this closed session be our come-to-Jesus, everybody get it out?
I don't think you can prohibit future motions for...
Okay. Then I rest. Well, unless the maker of the motion agrees to modify it, and I'm not quite sure...
No.
Okay. I'd have to think about that. We might have to... Oh. Okay. The motion is before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fatise Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
No.
Councilman Nordfeld?
No.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay. Then we are on to Resolution 18-69, approve the update to city manager's appointment with an employment agreement. And to introduce that, let's see. I'll go back to the original document that was put on. This is an agreement between the city and Wayne Pyle, which was proposed that it be effective May 31st, twenty... or this year, May 31st, and then end on 2023, with four more terms of one year each to renew, based upon a majority vote of the council. And that if the council opted not to continue that, that the city had to provide Wayne Pyle 180 days prior to the expiration of the term its intention not to renew this agreement. And it then just summarizes the current benefits that Mr. Pyle receives, the annual compensation of 207,376 dollars.
Which we might comment, Mayor, is lower than has been advertised in the news media this last week.
Okay. Now, is that... This is salary or compensation?
News media has been advertising...
It's what?
The... It's total comp in there.
Yes. Total comp in the news media, but they don't mention it that way. They say salary.
Yeah. Well, they've done that, and they do it to everyone. The media is not well-known for always... Yeah, always having things exact. And sometimes, to make the story more interesting, you have to remember, you know, they got to get people to listen. And although that's been brought to their attention by many elected officials, not just West Valley, but anyway. But it summarizes his benefits that he receives, you know, certainly that all other employees receive, medical, dental, et cetera, car, cellphone, et cetera. And then their termination process is that if the city decides to not continue Mr. Pyle's employment, the city shall provide Mr. Pyle with reasonable notice and opportunity to correct the cause of termination. And then if he corrects it, then the agreement continues. Let's see. If, in fact, it does happen, then he'll be entitled to be paid within five days of termination of the agreement, the format of the annual compensation for every year and pro-rated year that remains in the term or any renewal term of the agreement. So if we decide a year from now to terminate that, we would still be obligated to pay the additional full four years. Let's see, was there anything else on that? I missed something somewhere. Oh, excuse me. And that it can only be terminated where an action by Mr. Pyle constitutes a willful and deliberate violation of city policy regulations or the law, except for traffic violations. But Mr. Pyle can correct those. So that, I believe, catches the highlights of that agreement. The rest are mainly legal issues. If there's anything I missed, encourage the council to bring that up, so that that's, you know, fully aware here on our agenda.
Mayor, I... I'm sorry. Here, the term is the six years. You mentioned the four years.
No, it's a five-year with four one-year, well, extensions. No, I'm going by the original contract.
Okay, okay.
There are proposals to modify that. Those proposals included modifying the length, modifying the number of extensions and the length of the extensions. And then there are a number of other issues. Oh, let's see, a number of other issues on what constitutes performance, et cetera, like that. And we'll go through those here as we have a discussion. But I needed to get the basic contract out in front of us. Now that we have that, then there are a number of proposals to modify that agreement. And we can start on that in any particular order that the council would like. I'm going to get that up in front of me. There's... Okay, this... That was the original. Now we'll work from, if it's okay, the original with all comments document. Okay? Because that seems, I think, to have everything in it. That was proposed. Okay. So do you want to just go right straight down through that and talk about each of those issues?
Sure.
You know, I'm open, but, you know, I expect the council to chime in, Bernie.
I think one thing we need to make clear as we start the discussion is this is an individual contract. If at some point in the future we have a new city manager, this is not a master contract for a city manager. It is for Mr. Pyle specifically.
Mayor, several comments that were made in the process that we were advised would not be agreed to by Mr. Pyle. Never in my time on the council have we considered taking action on a contract that we did not have assurance the other party agreed to. In fact, often those contracts can be forced and already signed by the other party. I don't believe that it's useful in this discussion to discuss or propose terms that we know will not be acceptable. We have two versions of compensation agreement, a contract, that we have been advised would be acceptable. And the real question is, do we want Wayne Pyle to consider a city manager, and are we willing to extend him the contract so he has incentive to do so? He's been these last few days in another city, putting his best foot forward to obtain a job there where they will offer him a contract, because we have not.
Well, I find a couple of problems there with your statement. First of all, an employment contract, and in fact, any contract that we enter into, we have the right as a council and a duty to protect city interests. And even though the other party has agreed to it, whether it's a purchase contract, a service contract, or anything else, that if we determine that it's not in the best of city interests, we have an obligation to weigh in and say, wait a minute, no, we can't accept that.
Absolutely. We could vote down giving Mr. Pyle a contract.
Well, and I'll stop there. Okay. So are you saying that you think we should not... I think what your statement was, we should not discuss anything proposed that Mr. Pyle hasn't agreed to, which implies that whatever Mr. Pyle asks for, we're going to approve?
I don't think it implies that at all. There are seven of us. Four of us would need to vote to approve any contract extended to Mr. Pyle. I just don't think we should have voted on the contract that we've been advised he won't accept.
Well, that's appropriate, but if we have motions to modify the contract, and we'll see what happens from there.
Well, maybe the most straightforward thing would be just to make a motion to approve the one he will accept, and whether it goes through or not. And then if it is turned down, then for them. Yeah, I mean, I'm not making that motion. I'm just... It might save us a lot of time.
Okay. Well, there's... Anyone can make motions at any point.
If he won't accept it, if we alter it, then...
Will he accept the original without any modification?
Isn't that what I said? My understanding is that Mr. Pyle will accept the original document without modification.
And he will accept alternate A, which has some modifications.
Right. Has some modifications with respect to offering salary. It also changed the term to six years, which was a comment that I made in study meeting last year, but I think we had a time to retirement. I didn't intend necessarily that we not offer the other contract at five years. People have sharp ears and have been listening closely, and included all kinds of things, I think, here. But that certainly could be... We know he would accept five years. We don't need to offer him a six year. My preference would be to do that.
I guess my comment is, we've had 15 years without a contract. My obligation to the city is to not make sure he has a secure retirement. He is out looking at other cities. And so, the manner in which all this has come up causes me a pause. And so, that's where my issue... And I mean, I have issues with the contract as well, but I just have concerns with other items as well.
May I make a comment? Sure. And for, really for the benefit of those who may be listening in, or for the benefit of the record, certainly I have had my grunnings with Wayne over the years, things that he has not thought he should do that I thought he should do, or things that we didn't see eye to eye on. But I recognize that I'm not his boss. I'm one of seven bosses, and he cannot take my side necessarily on every issue. He has to execute the will of the council entirely. I believe that we have done a disservice to the city manager and to the city by not having a contract. Now, that's the situation that we had when we... When I was elected, that's a situation that's been in place for the entirety of Mr. Pyle's service to the city. He didn't push the issue. He served without a contract. But as we have discussed this, it's come... We've been informed that all city managers have a contract. We have done a disservice to the city by not having that security, and to Mr. Pyle by not having job security. We have discussed and voted on whether or not he should continue in this job without any notice, to me, other than, hey, let's have a closed session and vote on whether Wayne should have a job. And that is not appropriate in my mind, respecting the service that he has provided year after year to the city. So in discussing whether or not Mr. Pyle should continue employment, we created an evaluation. We just concluded the evaluation. The results of the evaluation was that overall, Mr. Pyle's performance exceeds expectations. So how are we going to be interviewed by the press or others? And what security do we offer to his replacement when we tell him, well, you can exceed expectations, but we still don't want you working here? The next city manager will have a contract, whether it's Mr. Pyle or somebody else. We have a good city manager, and I think we ought to extend him a contract. A few examples. This is a large city. It's a blue-collar city. You would expect certain things in the city that we do not have. One would be a homeless shelter. Why don't we have a homeless shelter? Because Mr. Pyle was out ahead of the game. He was organized. Staff was organized. He has a homeless task force that addresses the problem without bringing a homeless shelter here. We were prepared when the legislature and the county government looked to impose a homeless shelter on us. We were organized, and we fought that issue, and we were successful and have been successful. And that homeless task force continues. It also pours over, spills over into our affordable housing and all of the efforts that have been made there, the spending of our CDB... that have been made there, the spending of our CDBG money, our idea houses, all kinds of things that we do to provide affordable housing and not have to just put a Band-Aid on the problem by having a homeless shelter. As I stated, we're a large city. We have no, zero sexually-oriented businesses. Why? Because of advanced planning, being ahead of the game, and creating a situation where it's not attractive for such a company to bring something like that here. We've had problems with Utopia from its inception. As a city council, we assigned Wayne to fix Utopia. He took a great deal of time from the city manager office and put that into Utopia and has turned it around. The only complaints we get now are that they are digging in the wrong places as they expand the system. We routinely, several times a year, receive awards for being a good government, awards in finance, police, parks, et cetera. That is due to Mr. Pyle, due to his great staff that he has put together, and the direction that he has given them as city manager. In my mind, this is the easiest vote we'll ever have. And with that, I move that we approve Resolution 1869, alternate A, extending a contract to Mr. Pyle.
I'll second that motion with the comment that we do have an obligation to the city. And this is the most important work that we do, is to secure a city manager who can take our vision and lead a staff and organize a team to do what's best for the city. And I think we couldn't do better than Mr. Pyle. And he's, he does a great job for us, and I'll second that motion.
I make a comment here. To want to correct the information, Ken Leonard, this councilwoman, Leonard, mentioned about he was trying to go out and find a job. I just let you know, I sat there with Wayne Pyle and just face to face and tried to understand the situation. He personally did not go out search for the job. He just, by accident, and he got a job in Sprintville because his elderly parents was there. So, I personally think that's not a good idea because it's, even I, you know, I have elderly parents, I still do that. If I were him, I would do that, the same thing. But one thing I was struggling with is Utopia. Five years ago, Mr. Pyle, Wayne Pyle, to assign Paul Isaac to run the operation, basically day-to-day operation here at the City Hall. And I know Mr. Isaac is awfully good at chasing people around when he needs them. It's great. But the thing is, Wayne Pyle is, he's good at it, and he has a skill, talent, he's a talented person, and also he's smart, and he can take care and manage the city. My concern, you know, here again, I came here when I was 22 years old, spoke no English, and I taught myself English so I could go to school. So, just bear with me about this. Now, we have this resolution here, right in front of us. And think about this. I know city manager, he tried to basically secure, tried to protect himself. I think that's just fair. There's no problem with that, to me, perfectly fine. At the same time, I'm over here, to the same, everyone sitting right here, the role of the city council, and we tried to make this one, this deal is fair for the taxpayers' money. That's our role. And my concern was, every X, Y, Z dollar going through this contract, we certainly believe, or we certainly expect something to come out by the city manager. Like I says, not even one day, but the operation is day-to-day, run by the, day-to-day operation run by Paul Isaac. The things here, Utopia is our business. I understand Utopia is our West Valley City business, but West Valley City has multiple departments in our city, not only Utopia. And if city manager wanted to fix that problem, he had to designate someone to fix that problem because X, Y, Z money go into this policy, this contract, we expect something from city manager. One of the strategy planning meetings, we asked Wayne, how are you going to do it differently about Utopia? And he says, maybe spend less time with Utopia and more time with the city. That's a few years ago. And if this contract, personally, actually, actually, I share my feeling with the city builder too. I like the guy. I had, I believe he has done a great job, and he started doing it. He started working here for 15 years, and I want to support him. I want him to finish his job right here, retire right here at our city, not at Sprintville. But in this contract, basically, we have no leverage to bring him back to our table if something, we want to talk to him, or even we have a majority vote, and we cannot do that. I correct, I asked for Claire, as one of our attorneys, to put one statement into the item number five, but that one was rejected by city manager. That's I'm concerned, because I'm concerned that happened to Utopia, that can happen to any other thing in the next six years. However, I would, again, I would like to support him. I can vote yes for two years instead of six years. And that's my comment.
In fact, I would like to add some comments to that. First of all, Councilman Mueller made a statement which kind of generalized, and I think it kind of misled some people, and that was that not agreeing to the contract or not voting for this means that we wanting to leave. Okay? False statement. I am perfectly willing to vote for a contract of two years. Now, why? Why would I say two years but not five? Couple of things. Number one, first of all, if you go five years, over a period of five years, there will be two more elections. New council members could be elected, and they may have a different vision or goal for the city, which is their right to do as elected officials. But under the terms of this contract, if they wanted that new vision, Mr. Pyle has his contract and will stay employed, even if someone else could do a better job of achieving that particular new vision. So, we are binding those council members. They have no say in the matter. They must agree or live with what we say. Second, when I went through this, one of the things was that we could not terminate except for, and here's the statement, willful and deliberate violation of city policy regulations or the law, except for traffic violations. But in all these cases, Mr. Pyle must be given the opportunity to correct those. This, on the face of it, is a very ambiguous statement. Typically, elected officials have the authority to choose the direction of the city. I even went so far as to suggest, well, why don't we put in there that from the evaluation that this council approved, that we say on two of those, the vision of the city, and that the city manager treat each member of the council fairly and equally, put in there to meet what I consider the minimum standard, which is to meet expectations, not exceed, just meet expectations. Mr. Pyle rejected that and said, no, that can't be part of it. I can't be held to that standard, which really confuses me. It also confuses me as to what suddenly changed. For example, saying if we don't give him this contract, we're in essence firing him. And I would say, I had no thoughts of doing anything of the kind. We've had these discussions, and we were moving forward, and all of a sudden, we didn't bring this up. Mr. Pyle did, and he said, wait a minute, I can maybe get another job. Therefore, I won't stay unless you do these more things for me. And I say, okay, but how did that change what this council was doing at that point? Nothing. Did he suddenly feel like that maybe some future council member being elected is going to suddenly put him out of a job? Does he think he can't do as good a job for them as he's done for this council, to do the same things that he's doing right now? Does he anticipate that his performance is going to degrade or go down? Or would he still be able to convince the council that he is doing a good job? Now, I understand that other cities have, you know, these agreements. But it kind of confused me. In fact, looking at this council, I hope you understand that based upon this new contract, that the evaluation is worthless. There'll be no, it serves no purpose whatsoever because it wouldn't matter what he's rated, you know, because it's not really an evaluation. It doesn't have any purpose. It doesn't affect job performance, and certainly in the contract, and we didn't set it up to affect pay or benefits or anything. So, it just leaves me confused because it seems like Mr. Pyle came forward with this proposal because he had an opportunity for another job. And by the way, if he does find another job and leave, you know, we have no recourse. We have no real notice. There's nothing in there. This is a one-sided contract of what the city must do, but there's very little in there about what Mr. Pyle should do, other than to not be willful or deliberate in his violation of city policy regulation or law. And even there, if by some strange chance he did, he's given opportunity to say, I can just correct that. And so, and I imagine that he would. My concern is that it's too long. My concern is that it's one-sided. I am not looking to fire Mr. Pyle through this basis. I just don't see the sudden urgency that arose from last month, or even just a couple of weeks ago, that we now suddenly have to enter into this contract. And if Mr. Pyle says, hey, I won't stay unless you do give me that, I'm not sure I like to be negotiating where someone says, wait a minute, if you don't do what I want, I'm leaving. And I say, well, that's not what I would choose, but I can't stop you either. I can't stop you. Mr. Pyle, I've told him multiple times, please, Mr. Pyle, do what you think is best for you and your family. The city will survive. It may not be easy. It may not be what we want, but he must do what he thinks is best for his family. And apparently, he thinks that's either get another job or give me a contract. That's what it's come down to. And that just kind of leaves me kind of scratching my head and say, you know, based upon the discussions that we've had, and the discussions we've had with him, you know, I could see going forward just the way we are. And I wouldn't feel terrible about that. I don't think it would change anything. But whenever I try to say, well, gee, let's put a little protection in there for the city, just so that there's a process in place and it's not ambiguous, that's summarily dismissed.
Mayor, I should probably take more offense at you calling me a liar.
I did not say that, and please do not ever say that.
I just considered the source and the misleading comments that you just made. You called for a vote in December on whether he should maintain his job. In February, at our strategic planning meeting, Mr. Pyle asked for a contract. This is not a sudden new thing. He asked, he mentioned to me the request for a contract months before that, and I told him, why would we do that? I didn't know that other city managers had a contract, or that we, should we extend an offer to another city manager, we would need to extend him a contract too. Yes, he's looking for another job because we have pulled the rug out from under him, and his job security is missing in this position where he had worked for so long. Can we call the question?
It's appropriate. What's the vote on calling the question? Is that a two-thirds as well?
The vote on calling the question requires a second, and there is no debate. And so, if you get a second, then the council must vote on calling the question at that point.
So, majority? My question was, what is the vote count? Does it have to be simple majority or...
One moment, please. It is a two-thirds majority as well.
Okay. Just so that it's clear and in front of us. Okay? So, there's been a motion and seconded that we call the question. With that, then, to the council, to, excuse me, is this one that must be a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. To our assistant city recorder for the roll call.
I'd ask for a clarification or a restatement of the motion. Was it to approve the Resolution 1869?
No. The motion is to cut off debate and further comments or discussion.
Thank you.
That's all that is. The other motion will still be on the table, but at that point, we would have to then vote a second time on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lane?
Yes.
Councilman Mueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Okay, aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now, we have before us the motion that has been made, I think it was made by Councilman Mueller and seconded by Councilman Norfeld. Okay. That motion is before us. No further discussion or debate. To the city...
Right. And so, that was, the motion was to approve the Resolution, alternate A.
Alternate A.
Which is the six years?
Six years.
Yeah. Okay. That is the one before us.
Councilman Patice Manu?
No.
Councilwoman Lane?
No.
Councilman Mueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Nay.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion fails by majority.
Move that we approve Resolution 1869, the original agreement. Second.
Properly before us. We haven't cut off debates, so we can still make comments on this motion.
This was the original five-year term, correct?
We don't need a motion to cut off debate, then? We'll just turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Patice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lane?
No.
Councilman Mueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Very good. Thank you very much. That completes our business for the evening. With that, one more motion.
Motion's adjourned.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. We are adjourned.